Got my toes running all the way down here.
We'll call it tonight Stadium Point City Council to order. I'll bring to your attention that we have a revised agenda this evening. And the revisions are under formal actions, C, a factor more, and then D, National March for Meals Month proclamation. So that's the revisions. Councilman Miller will not be joining us this evening as Melissa's family. And then Councilman Brown's being held up by a train.
It's not a train.
Yeah, he's holding up the train.
It wasn't in any hurry either.
Yeah, that happens unfortunately. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Matt, Audi.
Present.
Bob, Richard.
Present.
Robert Peterson.
Present.
Kent Miller. Rick Brown. Tony Gengler.
Yes.
Lloyd Latrell.
Thank you. If you'll stand with me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask you to continue the blessings that you've bestowed on our community and the youth of our community, the way they have represented us across the state. It's amazing the feats that they have accomplished. We want you to bless our council meeting this evening so we make the right decisions that's the best for our community. We ask you to bring us some rainfall as our crops are in need of rain. It is fine. And we ask that you protect and bless and keep your hand on our law enforcement and our military as they service here and abroad. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lloyd, do you have anything to reinforce this?
Um, I do. I wanted to thank all the crews for the work they're doing. I see they're busy. They're going out this spring with the painting on the streets and water running through the main. All the things they do.
Thank you. Matt?
I like.
I want to make the high visibility clothing that the employees are wearing, boy, they really stand out when they're working on the streets. Kudos to them. Safety's pretty important. Mr. Brown?
What about you?
Bob? Tony?
Milton.
Okay. Katie, anything at this time?
Yes, I just wanted a quick legislative update. First of all, does everybody who wants it get the leave email?
I give it.
Okay. If you don't, I can forward the two or if you want to contact them. They are every Friday. Just a couple of things legislative, property tax lit hearings. I want to thank Mandy. She took the time to offer written testimony on behalf of our city to oppose the Senate bill and to support the House bill concerning the property tax lit hearings. There was a list of maybe 20, 25 cities that did that. So she took the time to do that on behalf of us. So thank you for that. But that was, those hearings were last week. There's lots going on, as you can imagine. There is a rental registration and inspection bill which could affect us a little bit. As you know, we currently have a pursuant to our code. If a tenant has a concern, they can call Chris and Chris can go out and inspect that property without the property owner's knowledge. This bill would make that, that wouldn't be allowed. Any property owner would have to have notice of inspection. That's just one part of the bill, but we're keeping an eye on that. Of course, concealed weapons is always coming up. Right now, our city has a prohibition on city employees concealed, carry while they're working. There is a bill to limit the city's ability to control that. Obviously, the league is opposed to that. They want the city's bill to make it their own, to prevent concealed carry. There's some papers bills. There's one on abandoned property, which the league isn't supportive, which should give more cities, cities more power. Maybe power's not the right word, options in dealing with abandoned property. So we're following that one a little bit. But there's some good information in that email. So if you want it, let me know and I can forward it to you. That's all I have as far as.
Speaking of rental properties, how are we doing on registering rental properties?
That was actually at the request of Chris, that was in your codification, that portion was removed.
Oh, it was?
It was determined that that was essentially unenforceable. The part that is left in there is the inspection and where it's a complaint driven or probable cause driven, he can go in and inspect. But the actual registering of properties, it wasn't working. He didn't speak to that.
I won't do that anymore then.
I'm not sure that he had any participation, let alone minimal.
He did.
Okay.
Katie, were you going to address this now or later?
I can't. I guess I want, what are your questions?
The streets that morning. Well, I see what you're talking about here. Either we're just stupid or we were grossly misinformed because I remember two people asking Glenn, if somebody buys a lot, are they going to pay for that whole street? And he said, yes, they will pay the whole thing. Now, I know what it says here, but he was asked about that because of the way that's written, so.
And I will tell you where, what my intentions are with the paperwork says and what I, as you know, most of the time when we build streets, we assess materials and engineering to the property owner and the city at large pays labor. That is the way the documents are drafted. So the ordinances that you pass assessing the costs are for materials and engineering. So that's what you see. Those are the numbers that you see. The actual labor costs, of course, this project, we had a contractor do it for several reasons. And that labor cost is not part of that assessment. Now, it can be, it will not be recovered on the Cooper property or on the Silver Fox. But that labor cost was, and the labor cost, I want to point out as well, the estimates that you see in the resolution are a lot higher than what actually came down. The actual labor cost roughly for the Silver Fox project was $160,000. The actual labor cost for the North Campus, roughly $350,000. As you can see, we estimated over $800,000 for labor. So these contractors came in well, well under budget. But those are not part of your assessment. So the issue then is, do you want to recover those costs and how do you do that? We have unsold lots up there, which we had appraised years ago when we first got that property. They were appraised as bare, empty lots. We've since added sewer, which the city paid for, it's not assessed, and streets. So if the city chooses to, you know, obviously that makes the value of the lots go up, then that would be addressed. But we haven't sold any lots lately. We haven't had offers on any lots. So it's difficult to say what those prices would be.
So you're saying that what we charge for a lot is going to go up because now they're worth more?
Right. I mean, the smallest lot up there, I think the original appraisal was maybe $3,000 or $4,000. Well, clearly, we've added a lot of value, so that needs to go up. But what that number is, you know, that depends on the offers that we get and everything else.
Well, the question I have, and you may not know because you weren't here, I want to know when that was changed because Lloyd, you paid for your street you ever built. And I paid for every bit of my street.
And I paid for streets in three different places.
Policy wise, I can't, I can't tell you.
See, the city did park beside me and I paid only the materials. But when they did the front of me and everything out west, the property owners paid 100% of that. So how that got changed, of course, I'd say you wouldn't have if you privy to that unless you did a lot of digging.
Yeah, no, I.
But that's where I never could figure where Glenn got that idea because it never was that way. You know, only if the city did the work did we furnish the labor.
It started the other way, I believe, when they did Hershey Street out here. When it was a redo, not a new street.
Right.
A redo.
Well, anyway, it looks like we may be able to retool some of that.
Yeah, and I want people to look at those resolutions and think, oh, my gosh, we paid $800,000 in labor. We didn't, not anywhere near it.
So we probably need to have those reappraised then before we?
Um, yeah, I mean, at some point, I guess the, you know, I don't know, we just haven't had a lot of, that I know of, of course, I'm not involved directly. That would be more the administrator and probably Heather as far as what interest there is.
There is interest.
Yeah.
There is interest. And when people do come and ask, you know, I do say these appraisals are old and at any time the appraisals could go up. So if you want them, you better get them. And we haven't had any firm offers yet. But, and you can kind of tell because you know about how big they are. It's about 30 or 35 cents a square foot.
Something like that.
So it's not much. Most of them are around $3,000 or $4,000. The most expensive ones, I think, were $7,000. They're relatively inexpensive. And I have the appraisal document from before that we use if we want to put that back out for bid again or however we want to do that.
Well, when we were discussing that, when Glenn was here, I remember I, we talked about what it was going to cost us hiring somebody. And we decided, or kind of talked about, well, if we have to hire somebody to do it, they should have to pay for the whole thing. And I even added in and said, well, why don't we add sidewalks? Glenn said, well, we'll let them figure out if they want sidewalks or not. Yeah, I remember that.
I know there were a lot of conversations on that, I think. I thought when we was, you know, was selling those lots, we was going to try to recruit as much as we could for a lot off of the streets there. And then, you know, some of we got on the lighting that we're going to recruit some of that unless it's on our property.
Well, I understand. There's a lot of city property up there that we'd have to pay for that part of that street.
Right. I think with the, we get a new appraisal before we sell, hopefully we can pick up some of those expenses to offset those payments.
Well, I hope so because I hate to see all the citizens, Lloyd, having to pay for that labor and everything.
Have you had any research on maybe housing development or what we've done other places? Somebody come in and build several houses?
Like what, what would be the norm for that, you mean?
Well, I mean, is there anybody that would?
Oh, that would come in and build several houses at a time? No.
If we gave them some incentive.
Possibly, yeah. You're going to have to, yeah, you'll have to pay for that to get somebody to come in and do it. But there's possibilities.
Houses up on Ackerman, those were gone.
They were.
Before they got and built.
And those did use state funding, you know, and they are income based houses. So there is some possibility for some of that. But I do think there's.
See about, if there's a possibility, then maybe we can decide on something kind. If we get a few houses up there, it'd be more interesting.
Right.
Instead of empty lots. So if we get five or six houses or like Ackman, that might be, you know, the bigger houses, people aren't going to be able to handle up there.
I mean, I do, I definitely think there's, there's interest. I, I mean, I have, I probably have four or five that are just sitting on the edge waiting and I'm not sure what they're waiting on, but people that have talked to us about it. I'm thinking, once this gets out, that we're going to look at a new appraisal, maybe somebody will jump on it because I'm imagining the price will go up quite a bit. I mean, they're, they're going to be full service lots now, so.
You can't fight a lot.
Right.
10, 15,000 or even more.
Absolutely.
We need to have VOTAC build their next house up here.
Well, we've had some of those conversations, so.
That'd be great.
That would be kind of fun.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Katie, for your information, I appreciate you.
Sure. Well, and I was, I was out most of the day today with court and such, so Mandy took time to copy all that for you, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Any questions on the staff reports that was included in your packet? Like Lloyd pointed out in the comments, the city crews are very busy in a lot of different areas, so they'll continue to. Next item on the agenda this evening is public comment with Greg Drum. Greg, do you want to address it?
Here. Evening.
Evening.
I want to begin by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council for the opportunity to speak tonight, express both my gratitude to the city and my advice for moving forward. I'm grateful that I had the opportunity partake in over 20 changes in the comprehensive plan that ultimately will provide a guide to improving the city of Lloyd. The experience is all new for me. And the time and effort put into the changes of the plan were both rewarding and exhausting. Whether it was my early morning meetings to the Ackroods or late meetings with Topeka legislators, we continue to take special interest in our great city. While I'm appreciative of the opportunity to serve this city on the planning commission, I do feel the city deserves clarity about current vacancy of my position. Many community members have approached me with feelings of abandonment. I feel I, I feel I owe that to them to have transparency. I first joined the planning commission to assist with the comprehensive plan and represent the rural community. As many know, the two mile jurisdiction piece of the plan is now being handed off to county. Because of my familiarity with the plan, I was asked to serve on the county planning commission. While I expressed my concerns of a service on both commissions, the Topeka lobbyist I was working with advised me that there was not a conflict of interest. I wanted to be clear to the city council and to the press that I did not resign from my position. Instead, I received a tight, near standardized letter from the city informing me of my forced resignation from the city planning commission effective immediately. While I respect the city's decision, I find their lack of personal concerns or appreciation for my work quite unsettling. I would hope that in the future, more humane and transparent means of communication would allow people to feel less blindsided. I don't find it professional practice to release someone from their duties in the letter. Although I no longer serve on the city commission, I can still understand the great importance of the comprehensive plan asked of the city of Lloyd. Therefore, I do want to present two pieces from statutes 12744. First, in statutes 12744B, it states, the governing body may adopt rules and regulations providing for the removal of members of the planning commission. For purposes of clarity and to avoid situations like mine, I implore the commission to adopt such rules and make them available to committee members in the future. In addition, statute 12744A states, any such planning commission shall be composed of not less than five members. Given the current state of the commission, I would hope they have plans to recruit a fifth member to ensure they are working within the law. Again, I want to thank you for taking time out of this meeting to allow me to express both my appreciation and concerns. I wish the city planning commission good luck with their continued planning and look forward to collaborating in the future as a representative of the county planning commission. On a side note, I would like to ask you, I've enclosed a copy of the letter. If you volunteered your time for over a year with the effort that you all know I put in, just like you guys do every day, do you feel that letter is appropriate? I'll let you guys discuss that. Thank you for that.
Thanks for addressing the council. Next item on the agenda this evening is public, excuse me, is consent agenda from March 1st council meeting and appropriations 3B. Motion been made by Councilman Audi to approve the consent agenda and appropriations 3B is a tie or a gap second?
Uh-uh.
Second by, who was it? By Councilman Richard. Any further comment? No further comment. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Gengler?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Motion carries. There are new resolutions this evening, so the next item will be formal actions. We, at the last meeting, we talked that, you know, we wasn't, Jay, we wasn't going to have a contract with Jay, but this is kind of a basic contract that spells out his duties.
You skipped ordinances.
Uh, I apologize. I like right over it. Okay, back to ordinance. Ordinance 2178, dedication of Willow Springs Way. Comments or questions for?
That's the street in the Solomon Valley Business District.
Right.
The one that's been there, the hall room?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been there for quite a while. We, when we did Andy Manifold, we found out that the city did not in fact own a portion of that street, a large portion of that street. So we obtained deeds from the property owners and now you're just formally opening it as a street.
Did the city not build that street?
Uh, yeah, I think so. As far as.
No. I got lost in the shuffle, I think.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly, I can't explain exactly why this happened, but from the very beginning, there were several surveys filed of record that had that street in there and it said City of Beloit, City of Beloit right away. And so I think everybody just assumed based on all those surveys that this is where the street is, this, but there was actually no documentation to go with those surveys. So that's the only thing I can think of of what happened there. As those properties were being sold off, they would do a new survey and every one of them had a drawing with, said City of Beloit Street.
Do we want it?
Well, it's yours.
I was asking Mike.
It's your property now. I guess it's, this would open it as a street, I guess, if you don't want.
Mr. Mayor, I approve ordinance 2178, opening Willow Springs Way.
It's been moved by Councilman Audi that we approve ordinance 2178, dedication of Willow Springs Way. Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2179, dedication of Andy Manifold Street.
I got to ask the obvious question. Who is he?
Heather. Heather's going to answer your question.
I am. We had a little bit of a contest in Solomon Valley Economic Development and we wanted people to come up with names. And so Chuck Hydrick came up with the name of Andy Manifold. He was a jeweler here in the turn of the century and had a cornet band and then played all over the world. So he played a lot in DC and I don't know, had a huge following. So the paper did a really good job and wrote up a nice little article that I have and I'm looking forward to if you'd like to read it. So that's who it is.
You get to play down to the city car.
See? Thank you.
I thought maybe you're all having a party when you come.
We might have.
I entertain a vote. Vote by Council Brown, we have adopted ordinance 2179, dedication of Andy Manifold Street. Have a second? Second by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Audi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, on the formal actions, interim city administrator contract. It's a pretty basic contract, I think, Katie, and drawn up and.
This is.
Go ahead, Katie.
I was just going to say, just as we, as we talked about last time, if we hire somebody at any time, then Jay would step, obviously step away from the position. This contract that you have in front of you goes through October 1st, but there's a provision in there that it can be extended if we don't have anybody hired by then. The only other provision that's different or addition to what we talked about last time, of course, the pay is on there, but then he will be reimbursed for mileage.
Mileage, Monday through Friday while in Beloit or mileage coming to Beloit?
I took it more as to and fro.
Yeah, I believe so.
Where is he at tonight?
He lives in Wichita. Where's he at tonight? We haven't, he can't start till the 21st.
Right, just Lord's a good pastor, doesn't he? Coming to meet him, that's all I was asking.
Well, he'll, he'll be at your next council meeting.
So is he going to stay here all week?
He'll stay here, be here Monday through Friday. He'll come in on Monday morning and he'll leave Friday afternoon.
Would it be appropriate to stop in and see him from the 21st on to the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, he'll be here.
He'll be here. I'll be looking forward, I think you'll find him very polite gentleman, very knowledgeable. Assuming we go ahead and pass this part, but he's planning on being here the 21st. He has some other things he wanted to go ahead and get finished up. He's always working on this.
I'll be offering sooner or later, we just didn't tell him we could pay.
Yeah, there you go.
I entertain a motion to accept the city interim city administrator contract.
I still move.
Been moved by Councilman Peterson that we approve the interim city administrator contract. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Audi. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prophesying. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the, the extension, six month extension for the CDVG Housing Rehab Project, making the new completion date October 31st. Any questions for staff on that?
Well, the housing, what are they behind on doing what they're supposed to be doing or what?
Heather, we had some contractor issues.
We did. If you remember, when we first started this, it was right after, we were in the middle of doing this, right when we got hit by the hailstorm in Labor Day two years ago. So that's kind of when this whole thing started. So we've had a hard time finding contractors to do it. We, we rebid the demo projects twice to get a better, a better rate on them. So that took us a little bit of time and then we've, we've had some holdups. So it's just contractors. We have a ton of interest. We're really excited to be able to do as many houses as we have. We just kind of had a hard time getting contractors on. We've got them now, we've got two left.
So you think we'll get it done?
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like the state was just kind of getting on us a little.
They were pleased. They actually came a couple of weeks ago and they were extremely pleased with what we've done. So they really want you to do a. So they really want you to do a, they want you to do a general area. They don't like when you spread it out. And so when they came and Carol Torkelson took them around from regional planning, you know, she could see what difference we've made over the entire city, so they were happy.
Good.
Which makes us happy.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the housing demolition time extension. Been moved by Councilman Richard that we approve the housing rehabilitation, demolition, CDVG extension. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the.